Thank you. We used to, we used to have. We're going to sign for the. Sorry, I'm shy. Can I sign in for those?
What can Garrett sign? Are you there? Can you hear us okay?
But I wanted to sign in for those.
I can see and hear. Yeah.
For the. Crystal Claire. The hearing?
Yes.
And City Council meeting.
Yes, thank you. Exactly. But this was in our. Well, no, it's this is like this year. So this is this year's, or last year. Oh, it's very great. No, not really. Yes, but it's more than a possible.
And. I'm not.
I just. I thought they should have a time to get more than. It's scary. Yeah, the act of. Good. You're sorry. You know. You know.
So.
Yeah, this is gorgeous. It's good. I don't think that's true. Yeah. I'm sorry. Possibly. He's interesting.
Yeah, so that is interesting.
So that. Again, um, Phil was bound to a new jersey. He was going to finish some voice man. It's close to super easy. A couple weeks ago. Small comic song. And.
You guys ready?
This whole day, it's been a while. So. You guys forget to the beach.
Okay. I'm calling the continuation of the hearing from last month. For ordinance nine four two, section six, points zero seven, zero B preservation and removal of trees, the GCO tax amendments. For four nine twenty four, the public hearing. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the application must provide their name and full mailing address if they wish to be notified of the decision, continuance, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code. The city zoning code specifies applicable criteria, criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Better to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing. An opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or the land use board of appeals or to seek damages in certain court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the planning commission, i.e. the city council, for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearings. The hearing's body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance, to a time and date certain or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony. Do any counselors need to declare conflict of interest, exhortate contact, or personal bias?
No.
No. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to challenge a council member's ability to make an impartial decision? Please raise your hand. Seeing none? Garrett, I guess we're going to have you go over the staff report again, please.
Yes, good evening. So what I'd like to do is more briefly than last time, review how we got here through various drafts. And then I'll review the planning commission's recommended amendments. I'm using the red line version that comes right after the ordinance in your packet. And then after that, we'll review a alternative red line version that starts on the fifteenth page of the electronic packet that reflects most of councillor Sharon's concerns as we understood them. So please stop me or redirect me if you'd if you'd like to. Okay, so planning commission worked over the most of 2023 to develop amendments to this section of the Gearhart zoning ordinance regarding tree protections. And they did that over the course of at least seven public meetings where the item appeared on the agenda. And anyone had an opportunity to come and participate in those discussions. Planning Commission recommended amendments to city council. City council had a meeting in January 2024 and had some concerns and questions, diverse concerns and questions reflecting different points of view and directed or requested that planning commission try to resolve those. And so planning commission met in spring of twenty four of this year and considered those issues that were raised by city council. And their main conclusion coming out of that meeting was that they felt like their, the purpose of what they were trying to do was not clearly communicated enough to the city council and that they wanted to mostly stick with what they had recommended and ask staff to to really emphasize that when they proposed their tree amendment, their their amendments to the ordinance, their purpose was to enable staff to keep track of and collect information on tree removal activity so that staff can better respond to citizen concerns when citizens witness tree removals taking place and call, call into city hall and ask, hey, what's going on with this? Is this allowed? Planning Commission wanted city, wanted city staff to have a more complete picture of tree removal activity going on. And so that was a main purpose of the amendments they proposed. They also wanted to improve usability to some extent. And so that's where they proposed that we change the tree measurement from a diameter measurement to a circumference measurement so that anyone can can go ahead and measure a tree without having to do any math. And they also took some of city council's concerns from January regarding the removal of hazard trees where some city councillors felt that our ordinance should not pose any obstacle or delay to someone who has a tree that's posing a hazard. Like people with a hazard tree should be able to take care of that as quickly as possible. And so planning commission recommended a couple of other changes to address that concern. And so they declined to take up a variety of other issues. General concerns about the ordinance being regulatory overreach. They did not think that that was, that that was a concern of theirs because it doesn't propose significant new restrictions on property owners. And then concerns about wanting the ordinance to protect more trees in more situations more completely. They felt that that was not their intention or purpose when they forwarded their ordinance to city council originally, and so they chose to not make changes that would protect more trees and more situations more completely. So that's how we got to the the planning commission recommended draft that's in ordinance nine forty two. So I'm going to dive into that. Starting with definitions, we have a change in the way trees are measured from diameter diameter to circumference, but it doesn't change the the actual size of trees that are protected. So this just establishes what kinds of trees are subject to this ordinance. Planning Commission did exclude Hawthorne Cherry Laurel and Tree of Heaven. And we received public comment at the last meeting that weeping willow and Siberian elm should be considered, should be excluded as well. And we're, if you direct us to do that, we'll include those on the list. Moving on to section C applicability. So in this section, the only change that planning commission proposes is moving a section that originally was later on in the ordinance and listed under exceptions at the end up to the beginning to just make it clear that in situations where a tree needs to be removed for building a building or its septic system or driveway or utilities, that's an exception to this ordinance and those trees are not protected. So this isn't a change from the current situation. It's just a change in where this this exception is located in the text. I think it's important to note here, too, that trees that are within the beach and dune overlay zone or within the freshwater lake and overlay zone are regulated or or within riparian zones under state goal seventeen. Those are those, those trees enjoy greater protections that are established in other parts of our zoning ordinance. Okay, so the beach and dune overlay zone, the lake and wetland overlay zone, so wetland buffers, for example, and fifty foot riparian buffers that are established elsewhere in the ordinance. Trees are protected more in those places. Okay, so moving on to section D. This is where, if anywhere, there is an extra restriction or requirement that's being placed on the, on property owners with trees. And the effect of this is that previously you only needed a permit to remove more than five trees in a year. And now with this proposed amendment, a property owner would need a permit to remove one tree in a year or two or three or four or five. And it establishes a different kind of permit for for this set of fewer trees, five or less. And this permit is one that an owner can obtain by filling out a form and presenting it to city staff. And as long as they've completed the form and they're not cutting down more than five trees in a year, city staff issue the permit. And there's, this proposed ordinance does not give city staff any like reason or authority to deny the permit. The permit is to be issued. And the purpose of it is for city staff to be aware of tree removal activity. So. So that's the change, I mean, but you know, the the basic idea, but behind the section D changes. For people that are removing more than five trees in a year, they would, just like they do now, they would still have to get a permit with a decision that's made by the planning commission. And the decision criteria are not proposed to be changed here. So no new restrictions or protections for trees or burden on the public when it comes to cutting down more than five trees in a year. Okay. And then moving on to, that that takes care of section E as well. And then moving on to section F. This is where planning commission had recommended some changes in response to city council back in the spring to make it so that when there's a hazard tree situation, the tree can be removed without obtaining a permit first. And a professional arborist can determine that the tree is a hazard or if it's just obviously a hazard, staff can can do that, too. And the idea is to make it easier to correct hazards in the future. And the same goes for emergency septic system repairs. So those are the proposed changes that planning commission has recommended. And in the last meeting, we had proposed amendments from councillor Sharon, and I can't say that what we have in writing here in the red line version that starts on page fifteen perfectly represents her views. But this is, what we put together is an attempt to give city council and the public something to respond to. And if there's ideas here that you want worked into ordinance nine forty two, we can work them into ordinance nine forty two. There are some ideas here that would just need to be fleshed out a little bit more. And there are some ideas here where there's, it implies like a real change to ordinance nine forty two, like the size of trees that are that are protected. And so I'm going to review these briefly. And so the first change comes in section B definitions where a class of protected tree is proposed called heritage trees. And it's common in many communities for there to be something called heritage trees. They're defined differently depending on where you are. But the idea is typically to protect very large trees and sometimes trees that have some sort of unique historical, historical value. And so some, you know, the the city could choose to protect some form of heritage tree. And it's a root zone as well, as is proposed here. Planning staff's perspective is that if the city wants to protect heritage trees, we would encourage the city to keep the definition as simple and objective as possible. And then moving on to applicability. There was some, there was some notes about protecting trees and wetlands and riparian areas. And so we added in a note here that they that they are protected. And if you all want to have a conversation about protecting trees more than they already are in these areas, we can talk about that as well. Moving on to section D in terms of requirements. Part of the proposal here is that removing a heritage tree or more than, more than three trees in a calendar year would require a permit by the city council. And so there's, there's sort of three changes from ordinance nine forty two to consider here. One, it would be protecting heritage trees with a permit issued by city council. One would be that instead of only requiring this more difficult to obtain permit for more than five trees removed in a calendar year, you would now have to do it for three. And the third is that it's a city council decision instead of a planning commission decision. And then in terms of the decision criteria for approving the removal of a heritage tree or more than three trees in a calendar year, the decision criteria are proposed to be changed in this draft by providing some more guidance on what kinds of replacement trees would actually count in in the decision. So it can't just be a tiny little tree. It would have to be a tree that's at least three inches in diameter. And so that's another change that could be considered for ordinance nine forty two with or without heritage tree or a three tree in a calendar year or city council decision making change. This could be something to consider on its own. Moving on to section E. Removing trees. In terms of demonstrating that a tree is a hazard tree or that a tree is diseased and that that's the reason that the tree has to be, that that trees have to be removed. This proposal is that a tree care specialist who's not involved or who would, you know, financially benefit from the actual removal would have to be testifying or providing evidence that the tree is diseased or a hazard. So the idea is to make it so that a tree care specialist doesn't have a perverse incentive to bend to the truth about whether a tree is diseased or hazardous because they hope to be the one getting paid to remove it. All right, moving on to exceptions. A couple of tweaks here that are proposed are just that the tree that's being removed because it's a safety hazard would have to pose an immediate hazard rather than just a hazard. And that once you're removing more than one tree, you have to, you'd have to go through the permit process. So you can't remove as many trees as you want under this exception. And I think from, you know, just to planning staff's perspective on this would be that the purpose of providing owners with a pathway to remove a tree immediately without a permit is to is to not stand in the way of public safety, to make sure that owners can be responsible owners and to limit the city's liability. And so if two trees pose a safety hazard, we think that they should be able to be removed without delay. But we can talk about this as well. And so those are the changes that we wanted to review with you, potential topics to incorporate into ordinance nine forty two. And that will conclude my comments for now and I'm, I'm here to answer questions as we go along.
Okay, thank you, Garrett. Are there any questions for Garrett right now about the red line items?
Red line items or about?
Ah, you could ask about the whole document. No, let's go and wait until we go to discussion deliberation for that. I'm just going, he just spoke about these red line items. If we got a question about that, let's clear it up right now. That's where we can move into proponents and opponents and neutral comments.
So Garrett, under the definition, the new definition or proposed definition of heritage tree, this is a tree estimated to be older than fifty years, a tree with historical or unique aesthetic value or a treaty in a prominent location. Is that a definition you've seen used elsewhere? Do you, do you believe that that is defendable if somebody were to challenges under the fourteenth amendment or winters versus New York requires that people that have to comply with rules are able to understand what the rules are? Who's going to, who's going to determine what? Or how are we going to, who's going to estimate the tree is more than fifty years old? And.
Yes.
What are the, what's the historical or aesthetic value that we're going to place on that's going to determine this is a heritage tree that's not?
Sure. So where I've seen heritage tree protections, it comes along with some other things. And that would be that heritage trees are are given heritage tree status before they're proposed to be cut down. So you would enable the, you know, if you, if you all are interested in having heritage trees and heritage tree protections, we would have to flesh this text out a little bit and re-present it to you with some, I think, some more specific criteria to address like historical aesthetic value, the fifty year estimate. And basically, someone would be able to come into city council before anyone proposes to cut the tree down. Say, hey, look, this is, we think this should be a heritage tree. Let's establish it as such. And from, from then on, it, you know, it enjoys heritage tree protections. So just based on this text, no, this is not enough to implement. But we could go further implementing it. And I do think, though, that in terms of the historical and the aesthetic value, that is more challenging than fifty years or a size criteria. City of Gearhart doesn't have a historic district or, you know, historic protections for buildings, for example. And so it would be, I think, unique to extend that criteria to tree protections. But we can work on that if you'd like us to.
So then my next question is under the heritage tree root definition, where the, the recommendation is that the root, the root zone that should be protected for a heritage tree, meaning you're going to protect this root zone, is the diameter of the trunk, trunk at four point five feet above the ground times twelve inches in any direction from the, from the trunk. And so if my math is right, we're talking seventeen and a half feet in any direction from the trunk for a fifty five inch heritage tree or thirty five feet, which is, I mean, imagine the size, somebody give me a guess at how big this firm is. That's, that's a lot of, a lot of land and in property that a lot of it is tied up with a residence with your subject. But what was the other question anyway? Oh. So. What, so for the dangerous condition criteria under E, where we're going to require that if you're going to remove a tree, you can remove it right now. But you, an arborist has to do a report. So what happens to when we have another two thousand seven storm and I have a tree that's causing a danger to my house and I have to cut it? It's not an arborist or an arborist coming out. I can't get an arborist to do the report and I'm technically in violation of that. I mean, can we write, in your opinion, should we write an ordinance that obligates a, a tree specialist or arborist or whatever you want to call it to do something? Can we force them to do something?
Yeah, so this, just for everybody's benefit, it seemed like we're going back to ordinance. Whereas before with heritage trees, we were talking about councillor Sharon's concepts. Now we're going back to.
Well, no, I'm looking at page two, two, and am I looking on page? I'm sorry.
Ordinance nine forty two.
Okay. Yeah, that's why we were talking about the red, what Sharon was.
Okay.
Because we already talked about the mayor asked us to keep to the stuff that's in red. So I'm looking at page two of two. Where it says there's a necessity of criteria, the granting of a major tree removal permit should be based on the finding that at least one of the following criteria is met. Necessity for new trees, which poses a safety hazard. Necessity to remove trees which are diseased. Evidence, the tree may be provided. Oh, and then further, I'm sorry, I hear it and I'm sorry, I interrupt. My bad. I apologize. A tree posing immediate safety hazard or dangerous condition may be removed without first obtaining a permit if a tree care specialist recommends. or dangerous condition may be removed without first obtaining a permit if a tree care specialist recommends removal as the corrective action. So again, I'm thinking of the two thousand seven storms before, even the storm that we had a couple of winters ago where we had trees down and, and blocking. We were wait for a tree arborist to come out, take a look at that tree. Um, it would, I mean, a lot of what we had to do at that time was have citizens running around, they were dragging trees all over the place behind their trucks and whatnot, we were all helping each other.
Right, and if you look under exception one, you can see that it says ten days after corrective action has occurred, you need to go into the city. So it's already covered as far as you can take care of the problem and then just go into the city and
Yeah, but it requires a, a tree care specialist report. So you have to, you have to, what, you're gonna hold him under his head and make him come out? What if he's not available? What if they're tied up?
That's not exactly.
Not invite, you can't, you can't fly with that if you can't find a tree arborist to make a report.
If I may, planning commission recommendation and staff's recommendation is that uh city staff have the authority when there's an obvious hazard to um issue the permit retroactively. And um and that would be the, you know, in a, in a large storm, yeah, we would anticipate, there's a lot of hazard situations. Um, people are gonna take care of the problem and be responsible. And um it looks like it does look like actually in planning commission's draft, an arborist is still supposed to submit some documentation afterwards. And so that's a, that's an interesting point that um it could, if someone decided to get out their ordinance um before correcting the hazard, they, they could feel like they should wait to correct the hazard because of this, um even in ordinance nine forty-two.
So could we put something, uh, this is going into discussion, I don't wanna do that. I just wanna get the red line stuff taken care of, if people have questions, and then we can go and move this along. Does anyone else have any questions on the red line? Dana, do you have any more questions?
Okay, um. So yeah, there was no exception um for the heritage treaty removal. Do we need a specific heritage tree exception for an emergency?
Yes, we would have to do that if we, if we're gonna have heritage tree protection.
Okay.
All right. No more? Okay. I'm going to uh, and Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, we we don't have an applicant on this, right? But, okay, so I'm going, and the only person who signed up is Shannon Smith. Are you a proponent, opponent, or neutral?
Um.
The treaty ordinance, what are you doing? Are you for it? Are you against? You, you come in for a group, what it is?
Oh, I am in support of the amendments by Sharon and more.
Okay, thank you. You're up.
Okay.
Say your name and address, please.
I've got some things.
Some things?
Yes. This is maybe a little back here. Sit in another chair. Or we'll take a break. So. Thank you. Okay, when?
Name and address, please, Shannon.
Why Shannon Smith? And I live at seven seven four Pacific Way, near Haraldory, nine seven one three eight. Anything else? Let's see. Um.
Can we get a picture of her exhibits?
Okay.
For the record.
Do you need to put it in front of the camera? Do you pull it in front of the camera?
Oh. For the cameras. So you may recall, Chief Cuomo would be our banner wife to hold it from the camera, so that it gives captures her. I'd like to read it since. I'm sorry, we kind of interrupted last meeting. Um, did you like dancing? Uh, okay. So um to conserve, preserve, protect open spaces, scenic areas, historic resources, natural resources, and around the Gerhard community for all, I added all, future generations. Sharon last meeting started to give a little bit more detail about this, and I felt she got interrupted, and I thought it was one of the best things I heard this council talk about in a long time. Because it impacts all of us and it impacts the future. It's our legacy for the future. Imagine if the year that Tom McCall suggested we have open beaches, we have protected beaches, instead that got voted down. Oh! I wanted the fell out there, I wanna have, you know, everything that I want for my house. Imagine what our beaches would look like. We have a legacy here along this creek that is unbelievably precious. The discussion tonight about how big the trees are, the different legacy trees, heritage trees, part of that is covered under what's called aquatic resources special concern. You guys have had me submit that before, what the circumference is, the density is, canopy, why are we inventory the trees we know that are precious like that? The areas that we know, we wanna make sure our kids, our grandkids, a hundred years from now see and appreciate, because we took the time to make sure they were protected. That's first. Second, I happen to be very invested in historic resources park. This is, of course, our beautiful eighteen ninety livery stable, the Gerhard Park livery stable hotel, or the hotel livery stable that was really important, goes to the hotels as well as building all of Gerhard. Go talk to Bob McQ in a third story about how important it was. Or was it eighteen ninety, but you'll get the idea. So what I would like to see is this become as much a priority for, again, what the risk is for people building here. When I first followed on the creek, all the property and the buildings, uh, building lots down all the way to Gerhard Club Road, most of them said unbuildable. Now they're just undeveloped. So what changed? What happened? They're still the same loss, they still have the same high tide, low tide. I've had at least three times at my location where the water just come in, and if I had a house where they proposed to build some of the houses now up the way on the creek, they would've been underwater, the foundation would've been underwater. I've had the barn at times become the water coming so far that it hit its foundation. So it's a big deal, sea level rise, we have um you know, we know the different storms here, the different intensity, all that. I think there's still many of these places that are really not safe or useless to build in the first place. So if you're gonna buy a property where you have to cut down trees to make it safe, especially our precious heritage trees that are somewhat three hundred seven years old. So when I say not enough to support that, that's my big deal. Why don't we inventory first? We have people that know how to do that. Applied resources special concern already has definitions we can use. I contacted the state lands again today, their new person, who has just been hired about four weeks ago, can come to the area and see what our trees are like. Particularly along the creek, so she is available. Next, I'd like to talk about if arborists and house folks are concerned about their livelihood, why don't we redirect them to the invasive species? We have many areas in the city we could work to, again, get the community to fund, hiring those folks to make sure we don't lose our own trees because of, you know, ivy and all the other things that grow. So it's possible to redirect and not have these people feel upset or deprived, and yet we as citizens can remember that we helped make this place what it is today, and we've preserved it, we've conserved it, we look at its whole, its whole purpose for being here. Lastly, I will again relate this to back, what is our vision for this community? The folks that then helped do the comprehensive plan that included this, and the people who originally came to here were having vision for this place. Of course, in the day, the forest was abundant, it didn't look like it was ever gonna end. People often thought that. Until, you read stories like the Lorax, you have the last precious tree. And it's, it's a big deal for those of us that have come here not just for the beach and the open space, but the beautiful forest that we we want to protect and preserve in the next hundred years, if not two hundred for you. So let's do something like that before we get too far ahead of ourselves. It would not be hard.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, Chief. All right. Are there any other proponents? I saw none that signed up electronically, so I consider no hands up to be assigned, but no one is. Any other proponents that may wanna speak because they were late getting in? No? I am now going to opponents. Are there any opponents to this ordinance? Are there any on the electronic board? Seeing no hands raised, I'll move on to neutral comments. Is there anyone with a neutral comment?
Toronto three six six north, what did you have, Garrett? I understand that some of those sit with screws that are down along the water's edge are retract almost protect them organs, um, preparing and free organisms. Many of them are three hundred years old or, and they are extremely rare and it really is some honestly, it's a treasure. Nobody talks to you.
Right. Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Anyone else with a neutral comment? There's no applicants rebuttal. Okay, I'm going to close the hearing. Council's gonna go into discussion. We have ordinance nine four two with a addition of the red line. So does anyone wanna talk about the ordinance as it's written right now? Nine four two. Here any no comments?
I'm sorry, I gave it maybe else a chance, because it seems like I'm talking, but um I do have another, I have a question for you, Garrett, on the, the staff report on the proposals. On the um, say, one, two, three, four, I guess it would be page four. You're looking back to that from the very beginning page of our packet. And at the top, it says the permit process will require additional unfunded staff time. So this is where you did an analysis of what it could cost the city or the impact on staff.
Yes.
Are you with me?
Yes.
Okay, so reading through this, um it, um, would it be fair to say that when you did that staff analysis, or whoever did the staff analysis, we assume that, that everybody would comply with this? That it would just be staff time, somebody coming in, filling out a permit, and, and that was it? We would never take time for staff to go out and investigate, it would never take time to go out and write a citation, it would take time for them to go to court, or, or court time for our municipal court judge to deal with it, um, or to deal with appeals or anything like that?
Yes.
Okay, would it also be fair to say that you didn't, um, you know, if, if I'm a second homeowner, and, um, because there could be an impact on the homeowners also, if I'm a second homeowner and I can't come in and fill out my health permit and I have to rely on a tree specialist or an arborist, every single one of the ones that I reached out to and spoke with said that that would cost me then no money, considering that I got quotes of seventeen hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars to remove this single tree? The, the impact, there would be some impact on staff, would it be fair to say that's not included in your analysis?
Yeah, we didn't estimate the amount of time it would take applicants to fill out the paperwork, or how much it would cost for an applicant to have an arborist do it for them.
Okay.
We do, the, the, the permit application would be about one page long.
Um, and, and have you reviewed um Deanna Mansell's suggestions to um to massage the invasive species? When initially in January, I had concerns about invasive species not being included, and it went back to the planning commission, and I, I appreciated their effort to identify trees that we thought were invasive, but to me, the very definition of an invasive tree is, or is a tree that doesn't belong here and it pops up unexpectedly and then causes problems. So I, I wonder if by locking ourselves into just three trees or four trees or whatever number of trees, if that could be a problem, or we should, if you would recommend doing something more like what Deanna recommended, which is where we say this is going to be our authority, we're not gonna just guess, and we're not gonna just, you know, it's not gonna be all wins, it's gonna be something, something defensible. Somebody who's a tree expert is going to say that that's, that's a tree. That's invasive.
Um, I think that that's okay, yeah. We were, I, I was thinking we'd just name the trees uh and add Weeping Willow and Siberian Elm, but if you wanna um open it up to ongoing interpretation informed by an expert, I think that's totally valid.
That's not what I'm talking about. What I'm saying is, what I prefer not to do is change the ordinance every time a new tree pops up.
So this state has a list of invasive species, so we could reference that stash.
That would be.
So then if, if more were added or taken off, then it would automatically.
I think that's a great idea. Go off the state tree list.
Okay. We'll do that.
And can someone sometime show me what a tree of heaven is, because I have never heard that, and I'd sure like to know of it. Because I'm just.
We Google it.
Uh, can I say something, Carrie?
Not at this time.
Okay.
You can do it, um.
I'm not signed up. You asked the question, though.
Right. I just asked if you can show me more. It's
There is a one.
Is this a joke, then?
I looked, looked up the tree of heaven, and they have not found the tree of heaven anywhere on the Oregon coast. It's mainly along the Zouby River and in the Portland area, but but so, so it's not, not here. If you haven't seen one, it's because it's not here.
All right. Thank you very much for answering that simple question. Damn. Gosh, I mean.
I have two more questions.
Okay, please go ahead.
Did you, did, did anybody, did the planning commissioner or anybody consult with a tree specialist or arborist or anybody when creating this?
No.
Okay, and um yeah, I'll leave right now.
Okay.
Okay, are we missing a comma here between comma, hot horn, comma, cherry, laurel? I've heard cherry laurel.
Neither have I, but then, you know, is there a comma supposed to be in there? I can't answer the question, I'm not a tree specialist. I don't know if there is a cherry laurel. This is just, okay, moving on. Any other questions on the red lines?
Yeah, will it, will it impact our, do you, in your opinion, would it impact our buildable lots numbers, would make some of our properties unbuildable that are currently on our buildable lots? That's gonna help us get money?
The exceptions that have been provided in the past and that are still provided. make it so that the tree removal protections do not apply to like a, a, a building envelope for a lot or the space that's needed for a driveway or a septic system. So that, that has been an exception up to now and it would remain an exception under ordinance nine, forty-two.
Well, I, I think, I, I think we would have to write a specific exception for, for the heritage tree and because if you're, we're going to say that those are protected in category cut down, that could make a lot of properties unbillable.
Yes, I have a note that if, if you all direct us to develop a heritage tree program, that we would need to include exceptions in those cases.
And did you guys ever discuss at any point, um, the need to in, incorporate something that said prohibits people from being able to plant either too close to a structure or on water mains, because a lot of the fifty year old trees around here are going to be on water mains?
I don't recall if, um, we discussed that at any length, I don't think that we did and it wasn't again, really, that, that wouldn't really be aligned with what the planning commission was intending to do with their proposal. Um, although absolutely, uh, you know, a public purpose and valid concern there if you all want to want us to address that.
Okay, for us to protect them. So anyway, I'm going to leave it there.
All right, are there any more discussions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, when I put the definition of the heritage tree in my red line version uh, and the definition of the root zone protection, uh, I didn't, I don't have the wherewithal to make something like that up. Those definitions were taken from, uh, national tree care sites as well as from other cities tree ordinances, so I did not make those up. Um, the root zone protection equates approximately to the drip line of the tree. Might be a little bit, might be a foot or so more than that, but the drip line of the tree is approximately where the roots go out to. Uh, so I just wanted to clarify that I didn't make those definitions up, I took them uh, from generally accepted definitions around the country. Um, the other thing, uh, I'd like to say is that the trees in Garret Hart provide us with untold advantages to living here. They dampen the sound from the highway, they, uh, help take care of the pollution that we would be breathing from the highway. Um, they increase property values, if you look this up online, which I did a few years ago admittedly, but I imagine it still stands. Mature trees on a property increase the property value between five and fifteen percent. Don't believe me, please look it up. Um, so, lastly, as I was saying, uh, last time, my primary duty as the city councillor is to uphold the comp plan. And I feel that what Shannon put up, which just came from the comp plan, um, is a very important duty for me as a councillor and that's one of the reasons why I'm bringing this all up. I mean, I'm not making money from this, I have no, you know, financial gain in this. Uh, I, I'm not doing it out of selfishness, I, I'm trying to preserve Garret Hart as it is and as I love it. That's it.
Thank you, Sharon. All right, any other discussion on nine, four, two or the red line items? Are there any changes to the red line items or does someone want to make a motion? I can't do that now, why not?
Yes, we, I'm agenda. Working system reservations.
Oh, that's my idea, I'm so sorry for even opening one up on that. All right, then. I guess we're going to move on. And that's what I've done. So excuse me a minute while I get the other set of papers.
Close the other here.
I did close the other here, thank you. All right. Now I'm going to open the city cop meeting, seven o'clock. Is there any declaration of conflict of interest?
No.
No, thank you. I have none. All right, I would like a motion to approve the public hearing and regular meeting of the city council for Wednesday, October August seventh, twenty twenty-four.
I move that we approve the minutes of the City of Garret Hart Public Hurry and Regular Meeting of the City Council on Wednesday, August seventh, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. That's done. Now I would like a motion to approve the notice that we had an executive session of the city council on Monday, August twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
I move we approve the notice that we had an executive session of the city council on Monday, August twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on. To the special meeting of the city council on Wednesday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, I'd like a motion for approval of minutes.
I would make a motion that we accept the special meeting of the city council Wednesday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
And I got a second, second, any discussion? None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Am I missing anyone? No one else is?
Aye, I'm sorry.
Did we get everyone that time? Okay. All right, going on, planning commission meetings, anyone got any questions for Chad over that? They are very comprehensive, I am very happy to see the change in their delivery.
I have a question.
Yeah, this is very nice.
Very nice, uh, I have a, I do have a question. Page five, uh, under proposed amendments. Says response to checklist, initial draft amendments have been proposed to address the deficiencies. My question is, who has proposed these draft amendments?
I'm going to let Garrett answer that, but I believe that's FEMA.
Yeah.
It's FEMA in concert with DLCB.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we're going to try to um, address those requirements, um, along with the upcoming FEMA biological opinion related requirements that we're going to have a work session on later this month in a combined manner, um, going forward, so we introduced this idea to planning commission, but um, what's, what's going to be coming will be a change from what you see there in the minutes, or if you look at their packet, it'll be different than that. So.
Okay, Garrett, you said combined work session, are you talking council and commission?
Chad, is that right, are we doing a joint work session?
So we thought, right now, we're going through staff and trying to figure out some dates of work and then we'll bring those dates to you, but we would recommend that we do a combined work session. It's going to take both, both, uh, groups to, to work on this project. So it would be good to have an educational experience with Garrett, maybe some levels to get us on the date, talk about what we do need to do. Okay, as a city.
And is, are we going to be discussing the pick 'em?
Yes.
Part of it, yeah, ideas in regards to what options the city has, whether to adopt the model code, come up with our own, do nothing, yes. All right, stop everything, that's another option.
Stop everything?
That's, that's an option for other states, that's not an option for.
Don't do that.
Right, okay, I have nothing to report, except for I had a great time in Montana with my grandfathers. And family members. Mostly my grandparents. Council reports, that Preston?
Uh, we didn't have, um, they canceled the, the work session, gosh.
This, yeah, this week's meeting with the cost group is canceled for lack of agenda items, we're still working for the, uh, process to find an, an art. I'll have more here.
Today or later?
During my, during my.
Okay.
That's all.
All right, Rita?
Well, I went to this month's meeting of the that's a regional housing task force and I apologize because every time I report on it, I will report what they're doing in other communities like Warrenton and Seaside and I've never had anything to say that what we're doing here in Garret. But, uh, I did get to see a presentation of the affordable housing, uh, that was going up across up in the, uh, old Seaside High School over there, press from the food bank and it was really a nice looking a nice looking proposal. And I also, being at the food bank and right next to us is the homeless camp, F Brands Village. And every week here, somehow I can see them improving and improving, so now I think it's complete, maybe you, I don't know if the chief knows if anybody's moved in over there, but it will help alleviate some of the homeless crisis that our, our community is, is seeing, so that will be good, so that's what we talked about.
Those are the white buildings beside our Dutch brothers and our.
Yes, yeah, they're between the food bank and the, yeah. And they're, they're really, they did a nice job, it looked really nice.
Sharon?
Uh, I participated in the coast as a ham radio operator, I was stationed up, uh, at, um, Mainline and Lewis and Clark and had the opportunity to see a lot of the runners who were at, close to the end of their seven plus mile run, so they were very tired and, uh, managed to cheer them on, uh, which was fun, uh, we did have an incident, uh, I think towards Crown Camp, uh, where the ambulance was called and the fire department also went down there, um, but I believe it was satisfactorily resolved, I don't know exactly what the incident was. Um, last night, uh, the county held, emergency operations held a Zoom meeting for all CERT members. Uh, the Mike Nealon, who was head of that, uh, basically went through, uh, what personal equipment we should have in, in our official CERT backpacks if, uh, were deployed or if we are sent out to work for an emergency. Um, and then lastly, I, I was on, uh, Garrett's Zoom meeting uh, to again review, uh, the class setup, uh, goals sixteen, seventeen and eighteen, uh, which covers estuaries, wetlands, et cetera. Uh, and that's it.
Thank you.
Um, I also went out of town for a little bit, but, um, so it was a little slower month, but, um, I did still communicate with citizens about public safety building. Um, and somebody, um, asked me to reach out to Passo in Washington to find out, uh, get some information on the fire station that they're building, or series of fire station. And, uh, we are playing, I'm not even sure if we're playing commentary, we've been a little busy with all the fires. Um, I've also had, um, numerous, numerous conversations with one particular citizen who is in a bit of a pickle um, and wants, wants us to be aware and wants me to warn everybody, um, about contractor licensing issues, um, this particular, um, citizen feels that they had a contractor that did some work that was subpar and this citizen feels that they had no recourse or no way to know that, um, the work was not done properly because there's no roofing permitting process. And, um, this person did submit, did some investigation on their own and determined that a couple of contractors that he has seen moving around our community were not licensed, I brought that to the attention of staff, they're handling that and they also put out warning to citizens. Before you hire a contractor, please, please, please do research and make sure that they're a licensed contractor and that they're also licensed to work in our city, that's the best protection that you can have. Um, because can void your warranty, especially like if you're getting new roofing she-walls, they have a thirty year warranty, but not for not installed correctly. It can be a very expensive, very expensive estate. Um, researched some fireworks complaints, I'll have more on that next month. Um, and then I attended the public service, um, building meeting that, uh, Preston spoke about and the homeowners association picnic, I just made a quick, I had a migraine, I did, too, so I made a quick show up and that, but that was it.
All right, thank you. All right, so now we'll move on to officer reports, chief of police.
Evening, uh, not have stats yet, it's a little early, so we're still putting those together, um. Some major changes in drug laws in Oregon, measure eleven's, uh, repeal has taken place September first was the date. So user amounts of drugs are no longer considered criminalized. Um, they will be offered a what is called a deflection program, which is still in the works. Placid County, I'm pleased to say it's probably one of the better counties in the state of Oregon and the state head of the ball. Uh, and so we are starting to work with a new deflection program manager who was hired by Placid County Sheriff's Office. Um, it's a work in progress, very with us, well, we are starting to case some teeth back in law enforcement to, uh, curb our drug problem, which is ungranted. Uh, I was visited by CIS, uh, which is our insurance provider, city county insurance, uh, they insure a lot of municipalities in Oregon. Uh, we did a, I wouldn't call it an audit, it was more, uh, just a walkthrough, we would sit down for a few hours and went over everything we have, we had some good stuff going on, uh, some praise from some things, other things we are lacking and a lot of that is due to space and officer manpower, obviously. Uh, we are working on it and coming up with creative solutions to, um, make our situation better. Uh, I expect a report from the, the gentleman that came and did the audit. He should have it to us probably in the next two or three weeks and we'll sit down and go over some things to make it better and maybe even some potential small grants to assist us in moving forward. So I can see.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Really appreciate that. Okay, uh, Chief Como is on the fire. So we have a total of sixty-two calls, six fire, three brush fires, one structure fire, three hazardous conditions, which are gas leaks, thirty-two medical, five NDAs. That's a boat, motor vehicle accident. Seven public assistance, one water rescue and four fire investigations. Ended on call five oh four, double city twenty-five, double district thirty. Aid given to Seaside four times, Warrenton one time, Hamlet Canyon Beach Fire one time, OSFM one time. And that's his report. Master of Money.
So the city audit groups were here last week to conduct their field audit and they were very happy with us and our procedures and they were able to get everything completed and do all of their onsite verifications quickly and, um, efficiently. Uh, just a reminder, our audit is due by December thirty-first, um, so they really. Just a reminder, our audit is due by December 31st, so they will give a brief council report when they complete it. It probably won't be in December, it'll probably be in January. Noteworthy revenue this month are a charter communication franchise fee payment, our marijuana quarterly tax payments came in, conflag mobilization payment for a conflag that our fire staff had gone in July, and a portion of payments in both the state revenue sharing and the state street fund. Funds. Noteworthy expenditures were the annual insurance payment for our property liability and auto insurance, which increased 19% this year, which is around $14,000. The invoice amount is divided between three funds, not equally, but the general fund, the water fund, and the street fund. There was a payment to the sheriff's office, so their continued law enforcement support, which has been reduced to $3,000 monthly. The fire department had conflag expenditures, and that's both in personnel services and materials and services, not all of that money has been reimbursed yet, only one conflag. There was a water purchase payment to Warrenton. The anticipated water rate increases were implemented July 1st, with a base increase of 3.99% and a volume increase of 55.78%. There were expenditures in the building fund for the building inspectors' monthly contract services, which are assessed based on our permits issued. They didn't have an excessive amount of permits, even though it looks like he was paid quite a bit. We had one permit that was exceptionally large for a planned review for a house. There were also some necessary vehicle accessories purchased in Fund 78, the public work expenditures in preparation for receiving our new public works vehicle, which we hope to be here soon. Gearhart's new water rates went into effect July 21st, which created a split rate invoice for the August billing cycle properties. Although the conservation tier rate system was implemented in January of this last year, this is really the first cycle that any properties are seeing the impacts of the conservation rates because of the summer water usages. The goal is that the implementation of the tiered consumption block rate system will encourage water conservation. However, some high water users have expressed concern over what they consider to be a punitive reason for maintaining green manicure landscapes, so you may hear some complaints. Through time, property owners may find alternative landscaping and vegetation options that don't require as much water in our sandy soil. And because with a state limited water, with our state limited water resources and a water agreement that caps water purchase usage, conservation is a priority for us. So that's one of the reasons we implemented it, so hopefully we'll pass some of it. I would also like to thank Angelina Torres and the Building Department for requiring contracts, contractors to verify their subcontractor compliance, kind of like Councilor Poole was, had mentioned. The department, the Building Department is also encouraging homeowners to verify their contractors and subcontractors through the CCB to ensure that they hold active licenses, or respond, liability insurance, stability bonds, and other potential required certifications, as well as ensuring that they have an active City of Gearhart business license. One of the things that really came to light from the gentleman that Councilor Poole was talking about, he had done, he has done extensive research talking to different state agencies and departments. And, you know, there, there are gaps where people just assume that when you hire a general contractor, that they're doing the right thing, and all of the people, because it is their obligation to make sure that they're certified, but it's ultimately your obligation by writing a check. So we just really want to encourage people, it takes three minutes to type it in, it's not that difficult, and you'll see if they're active, and that they have the right certifications to provide the service, so.
And just to clarify, the city can't recommend people to you, but they can tell you whether they're licensed here, and they can help direct you to the research and the information that you need. But we wouldn't, we wouldn't take position off who we should hire.
Because our building software does require that you have an active business license, but when you're the general contractor, what, what we have found is that many of the subcontractors were not being listed, so we did not know there was a gap between them out there working. And so we've done, Angelina's done a amazing job, we probably have had at least, at least 25 subcontractors building out business licenses, so they were out there doing business, we just...
May I ask a few questions?
Absolutely. Page 34 and page 45, yeah, it's 2,500 and 2,800, why not to retrieve them? I just wondered where those locations.
One of them was on Pacific Way.
The one down by the school. That's coming back to us.
What was the other page?
Forty, forty-five.
That wouldn't be Frank's trees, um, Frank's.
No, it wasn't that much.
Page 45, fall the tree removal.
All the tree books, the, I'm pretty sure that this is, that this is like way trees, tree.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, 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 it's okay. On page 35, you said?
34. Her report was big beans.
So big beans.
Number E.
We'll have to look.
Yeah, I can't recall.
He's telling you.
I'll have to go back and look.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm driving, wait.
Okay, second question is, payments to SIS? Was that just for one month, or what's the time period?
For which one?
SIS to SIS, there's two different payments to...
Oh, CIS, yes, so CIS is our health insurance, so in the beginning it's our health for the month, and then on page 34, it's our liability insurance for the year.
Oh, it's for the year, okay, great.
So we make one payment that's due, and that's the one that increased $40,000 over last year.
And then, one more question on page 39, Leonard. I was just curious, is he paid by the hour or type of service?
So he is a contracted service, and his RFP, when we did his contract agreement, is he gets paid a percentage of every permit. So he submits, we get the revenue, 100% of the revenue, and then he gets 75%.
Okay, by revenue, that was my second question to that, so is that paid for by the builders or developers?
Homeowners.
So you're just, so you're basically kind of funneling some of that money over to him? The city's not taking money out of city money?
No, it's Fund 40, so if you look on page two, the building up at the very top, there's the revenue, that is money received. So we've received $50,545, and of that, we charged some of Angelina's, and Leonard also is a contractor, so some cities, it's a city employee. But we have contractors.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Justin.
Yep.
Peter?
So the DLC FEMA has already been mentioned, Garrett and I both thought we would have language from FEMA by now, we don't, but we've scheduled, we're scheduling that joint work session. Clarify kind of the approach, we've talked about it a bunch with Chad and Angela as well. I think we're probably gonna end up recommending a hybrid system, but ultimately it'll be up to you guys as the city council to decide what you want to do with that. In some communities, it's going to have a pretty substantial impact. There'll certainly be some impact in Gearhart, particularly related to fill balance and floodplains, but we're going to be less impacted than Astoria and Warrenton. My understanding is they are considering litigation against FEMA. That is not something that I would suggest we join in. But ultimately, again, that, that would be a decision that's made by you. As the city council, the, the unlicensed, and by unlicensed, I mean not licensed by the construction contractor board, has been mentioned as well. We provide a notice to the Secretary of State's Office, the CCB. And as Justin said, Angelina's doing a great job of making sure that contractors doing work in Gearhart are getting business licenses in Gearhart, so kudos to her, she's working very hard. We have a couple of projects that, that I think are, are coming up. One is going to be fees associated with fire services that are not for a conflagration, but rather like hikers get stranded somewhere, and so we have to send a truck, things like that, to make sure we're recovering our fees for outside of the jurisdiction responses, because that's taking resources out of Gearhart to, to somewhere else. So I've looked at, I've looked at a variety of cities and how they've done it, I think I'm gonna recommend, we're a little less aggressive than Gresham, but he's very aggressive, but I think I have a good understanding of the range, and we'll have some conversations about that. Planning Commission is interested in looking at SDCs. Chad and I, and Garrett and Angelina will be involved in this as well, are looking at that issue. There's a new Supreme Court case, it's called the Sheets case, Sheets with a TZ. And I'm recommending to all the jurisdictions I represent that we look at SDCs, and that SDCs be updated on a regular basis to make sure we're actually capturing the costs. So now, as we're talking about all these other fees, might be a good time for us to do that, and just make sure that everything we have is current and legal and supported by actual costs and fees. I feel like I'm missing one thing, but it is, oh, the other thing I'm missing is that we're going through the housing needs analysis, billable inventory right now. We've got preliminary data, I'm not completely happy with the accuracy of the data at this point. We're going to, we're gonna work really hard with the county's consultant in order to make sure that they've captured actual billable lots in Gearhart, so we don't have the issues we had last time. And also that we, they're accurately capturing our growth in, in real time, so that we get our fair share of the state share funds, which has been an issue in the past as well. So if anyone has any questions, then you have to answer.
Any questions?
Very busy.
Sure.
You talked about recovering fees for out of jurisdiction. Would the beach be considered out of jurisdiction because it belongs to our parks?
Yeah, I think it, it could be, we, we would have to make sure that the state will be willing to pay us for, for activities in their park, but we could certainly, yeah, that is outside of City of Gearhart. So I think that's a decision we'll be taking.
So could we recover some fees for all the 4th of July coverage that we have done on the beach?
Once we have, once we have the fee schedule in place, I think that at that point for next year, we can. And then I expect that we'll develop new best practices for the beach next year, to make sure we're really down on it, because there were some neighborhoods that were, I mean, I saw myself here, got a lot of phone calls, a lot of people on my cell phone, turns out. There were definitely some impacted neighborhoods, they, they couldn't even park their cars. And so we've talked about doing a limited parking permit program for those folks, so that's the owners and, and you know, a couple of guests, and then we're managing that. And then I thought I had cast our messaging to high schools. Turns out, things have changed since I was in high school, and the kids that are coming here are, in the, in the 29 years living in high school, the, the student mix coming to Gearhart has changed. So we're going to cast a much wider net for metro area schools next year, and hopefully get word out, really. Because it's, it was wonderful for A, we really enjoyed it, but there were definitely some quality of life issues that we're gonna try and improve on this year, make sure we're here legally.
Yeah, I have one question about Angelina giving, or getting the subcontractors to be licensed in the city. Are, are they showing that they're licensed in the state in order to get a city license?
Well, so, yeah, they would, we're, well, what Angela's found is some gaps in our system, and so we're, it's just a matter of making sure that the generals are understanding all their stuffs, and then we can verify whether the subs are licensed, state licensed by us. Paying their, by licensed by us, I mean paying our business license fee. And then just some community education, because some people have some really adverse experiences. And, you know, obviously we want, we don't want people getting bad work done, that then negatively impacts their home and their neighbors too.
Okay, thank you.
So the other, so getting, so getting back to the, to the beach. So fire department goes down to Hutter Point, where we pull State Park, or up to, up to Saddle Mountain, where I ain't gonna rescue. Do you think that the state's really gonna pay us?
Well, if the state doesn't pay us, the individual would pay us.
I think you'd be better off, you know, having individuals' insurance pay for that, because I don't think the state is, you're not gonna get any for a stand.
Right, so in, in other jurisdictions, we have the people, particularly if it's an expensive search and rescue, that the people are responsible. Or rather, the people's insurance for car accidents, things like that.
Working on that now.
Oh, car accidents.
We used to do that in my department, we did both long percent of the, through heat.
Yeah, this is something that Andy proposed to Peter, and Peter's gonna... So I'm gonna be collaborating with Andy on this issue, and then we're just gonna, again, this is, we're trying to do cost recovery for, for services provided outside of Gearhart.
Great, alright, Chad, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just as a reminder, contractor work hours is something that seems to be percolating these days. Sundays, we're seeing more contractors working. So we're gonna, we have some signs that we're putting up, they're going up tonight, as a matter of fact. We're gonna do some enhanced patrols over the weekend, to where the police department's gonna be kind of paying attention, listening to share warnings, unless there's an issue that they care of. But just as a reminder, the contractor work hours are 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and landscape work hours are 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. That is Monday through Saturday, Sundays are a day of rest. So I will be informing people prior to giving out tickets, unless we start hearing from people at time and time again. I, work session, FEMA buyout, pay attention to that. By the end of this week, we should be getting out some dates for those potential meetings for a work session, so we'll be out to you, Council, and the planning officials. I did a walkthrough with the Oregon Way Public Safety Building site a few weeks ago, was that last week, I was coming into, and just did a real basic walkthrough of the house and that property. Nothing more to add on that, it was a mission. And just did a real basic walkthrough of the house and that property. Nothing more to add on that. It was a mission uh walkthrough and from then on. Uh, the next piece within the emergency or uh public safety building is to look at hiring an architect to help us through the next phase. And that phase is uh happening. Uh, the seven member uh RFP selection committee met uh a few times. We went through all the proposals, uh I think we had eight of them uh from all the different uh architect and engineering firms uh around in the community that has uh has uh past experience with this type of work. We are, uh, we threw a process that we use for storing that was simple, yet it took a long time. I, we found the top three uh architects and engineering firms uh that we're interested in interviewing further. And so next Monday, uh from ten AM to three PM, we'll be interviewing those firms uh as a group. And then from there, uh that group will take a look at that, those interviews. Uh, potentially propose an architect and engineer that has worked well for our situation. And then bring that to the city council in October, city council. And then from there, it's the city council's decision. We'll provide you with the information and what we learned about these folks and it'll help us make that decision. Uh, we had the town hall, it went well. I've had some pretty good reviews on that town hall. Uh, after we we hire or look at hiring this uh architect and engineer. After that, then we will begin the process of uh community meetings. More community meetings. Uh, in those community meetings will be used to consolidate thoughts on the station, the size of needs. We will help us with that. And then um we will be working with some assessments that the staff has been doing. But again, no size or location has been determined yet. This is going to be a public process and that is moving forward. I also uh attended some billable lands inventory and infrastructure meetings that Peter was talking about. Uh, communities and insurance meeting was pretty interesting. I think all of us will start to see our insurance rates go up and the city has no difference. Uh, I don't think these insurance rates are necessarily due to any issue that the city has. We're pretty accident free and we have a safe working group here. This is uh seems to be happening across the board in this insurance infrastructure. Uh, we had special council meetings, uh attended the Oregonians with floodplain development, field buyout, correlation meeting. Uh, Peter was talking a little bit about that. Probably something we're not going to get into, but it was educational. Uh, we submitted a Smithport property donation letter request. Uh, so so working with that. I'm working with PD on our safety remodel. Uh, we did finish the tennis and pickleball courts. Uh, so that was finally done. We had some people chomping at the bits, getting into those pickleball and tennis courts. Turned out really nice. We are missing some small square uh pieces that were used to protect the courts from uh the nets of doing damage, but you know, buy some new ones. But if anybody knows what they may have, please bring them back. Uh, coenforcement, there's lots of, but we've been busy there. Uh, unlicensed contractor has been reported, multiple true checks. Uh, septic checks, conscious uh contractor work hours, and that's sort of everything we're working through. Um, but at this point, that's what I have to report.
Yeah.
So the meeting with the cost group, when you meet with the potential architects, the the architect selection committee will select an architect to report this or the proposal, proposed architect before the city council. And then the city council will vote. However, if if I don't get comparison to the other architects, how will I make a selection? I mean, will I see the interviews and the proposals from the other two architects or will I just have to take the proposed choice and say, okay?
No, uh Jesse from the cost group will put together a report based on what we learned in my interviews and present that information to you. I think that for the most part, we're going to give you three to choose from. We may make a recommendation of of who we think might be best based on our research. So you'll have all these statements mentioned.
Is this the same Jesse who said that she would speak to every city councilor as not? And I'm going to take her proposals? That'll be interesting. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, what are the safety remodel ideas you're referring to? The police department?
Uh, I'll let uh Chief Josh Gregory talk about that.
So in the police department, as I know, we have very limited space. Um, we have some evidence collection issues that need to be cleaned up. Uh, so we're going to be doing a remodel to move uh our office around and and change it to the better. One of the uh ways we're going to do that is to tear out the big wooden box that's in there. That's uh not really that useful anymore. And creating more space with that to add more modern um and more efficient storage capacity. We're also going to be moving our office from where we are into the side over here. I am building a false wall between it because of CGIS, which is the criminal criminal justice information sharing system. We can't, why, that's why there was a lot of that office is you can't, if they're not cleared, you can't go in there and see confidential information. Uh, so we're going to utilize the side over here as our office space that we work in, turn desks. The door over here will get a metal cover in front of it that will keep it from, it will no longer be public access. Uh, public can access the police department from the front of city hall and then uh they reach out to us. Uh, that door will remain there as a egress, fire egress, but it will have a cover on it and that will be our office space that we use. Uh, in this area here, we're gonna, we're looking at putting a table out there so that it's a small table. If you want to come to speak with us or we can talk with people, it's a a nice area that we can sit down and speak with them.
Thank you. And then Chad, the house on the Oregon way site, is that in usable shape or?
Uh, hard to say. I I'm really, uh, it depends on what the ideas are. I do know I talked to the, it's a nice house. And it's, and it's got some good open space to it, but in order to be used for critical infrastructure, it has to be heavily, heavily. Uh, and that would be for police department and the fire department. We're going to need all the experts for that. Um, but yeah, really, we weren't, we hadn't heard any other news at this point, but the architecture will just do that.
But it's for equipment storage for public works and and whatnot and it's existing.
The the property itself, yeah.
Because that's not essential. That's not considered essential and we're actively upgraded.
Right.
So you're gonna, you're saying that house is going to be evaluated as far as what would have to happen to it to make it useful for us? I'm just trying to.
Potentially, or whether or not that house should even stand and would be torn down. And if the community picks that as a site of public safety building by chance, then we would have to look at how all that should work. But I'm not sure yet. That's something that you folks will be uh involved with throughout the process.
Thank you, Chad.
Yeah.
All right. Public communications. Anyone wishing to address the city council concerning items of interest? Not on the agenda. They do so at this time. All remarks will be limited to five minutes per person. Requests to con and electronically must be submitted by email to the city recorder at info at cityofgearheart.com. No later than four PM the day of the meeting. In-person attendees wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to the meeting. Right now, we're going to go over the written communication. There's one from Whitney Nye who wants an ordinance for no more gas blowers from landscapers for the noise issue. Let's see some. Uh, just half a second. Let me get these other two correspondence. Uh, Molly Meyer is in favor of the tree preservation. And Mike Baker is in favor of the tree preservation. So those are the three communications from the public. Yes, Preston, go ahead.
So when they, I mean, when people get up and speak at the council meeting, they need to give their name and address, right? Local address. How come they don't have to do that on?
You know, I don't have any idea why we've never asked for that.
Uh, we we haven't accepted a uh anonymous correspondence. And I guess that we consider these email addresses not anonymous. I happen to know one of these people, one person did, one person didn't. I think it should be required. We could, uh, we could probably respond back to them asking, we should fill their name and address if we were to submit this. I don't think that would be difficult.
It's just a little more time on the computer for somebody else.
I'll work on that with Miss Christie and we'll talk about it.
Okay. Thank you. So that's all comments. That's read. That's late correspondence. Nobody in the audience? Nobody on the hand? All right, we're moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance nine four two, section six, point zero seven zero eight, preservation and removal of trees, GCO tax amendments. This is the ordinance that we discussed earlier in the hearing. You may make a motion. No.
Okay.
It does not. When it goes to old business, there'll be a request for a public. Pardon me?
I signed up to ask.
Oh, excuse me. I forgot that you were.
Still here, yeah.
No, no, it's, it's right here and it's
Thanks.
City council meeting. So go ahead, Chad.
Okay, I'll do the city. Chad Spess, that's a specific way, Gearheart, Oregon, right definitely. Okay, um, two informational things that you may respond to, maybe not, probably not, but um. Recently, about six months ago on Think Out Loud, was a wonderful interview with the city of Bend about their plan and their interesting actually replacement system. They have to work with homeowners that wish to reduce their water usage for their properties. And it's a fantastic episode that they introduced several of the contractors in this event and around the area that are actually working to again, work with the homeowners for their sign for their properties to eliminate their lawns or change it to something more bend-like that does not use the amount of water. And it actually helps supplement the owner's investment to change it out. And so far it's been just really fantastic. The owners love it and say, save water, city loves it, thanks, they come. So just a thought. Secondly, um, I've written this a couple of social media posts, but there's a coyote pack right over here on between the first and second avenue. Uh, two big adults, I guess I've never seen, even online, they're camping. And it's three pups at least, um, who have a really good time now up and down the creek today. Broad daylight down on about A Street. Uh, so I have a post on social media saying, small dogs, small cats, small children, uh be careful. Uh, they're, they seem pretty aggressive. They love me from out when the sirens go off like and howl like me. Yeah. And they're right there in my yard, fifty feet away from me, didn't care. So I wondered if the city might put a post out about be careful for your furry friends and your, your, your ankles. Thanks.
Okay, that's enough that it's, we're beginning to run in season two.
Yeah, that's pretty good, too. So um, that question, which you probably want to answer, but that's okay. Could the public have information about the firms being considered more than a common safety? Just as FYI. To learn about.
What do you consider?
Um, any information about the firms being interviewed for the public's safety?
Um, yeah, I don't.
Just as background.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think I should have said.
Just like yeah, the post is gonna be great. And this citizens being more and more as you go up. Last but not least, I'll bring up again my little favorite subject, about the difference between vision for communities like ours and our goals or comprehensive plan, et cetera. I brought tonight, my computer couldn't like remember it, but it has given me enough, so I'll supply more. Um, particularly two statements. I think I mentioned before the vision from City of Seaside, which is um not uh quite what I'm getting at, but I also brought one tonight for the city of Bozeman. And Bozeman, Montana, and actually Big Sky, Montana, use the same firm. And what you'll see here is a couple of things that I think are really interesting. They talk about, again, the feeling of the community. So they talk about engaged community, innovative economy. They look at diversified and innovative, creative ways for the community to um to get income and maybe not traditionally, but other ways. Uh, a safe, well, welcoming community. We embrace safe, healthy, welcoming, inclusive a character of our town. A well-planned city, a creative learning culture. Uh, a sustainable environment, protective environment. High-performance organization and ethical conduct in the city leaders. And again, not for anyone's reason doing these things, but it gives um, the communities I've seen like Nepal, Idaho, Bozeman, Big Sky that have done this have got a renewed enthusiasm for their citizens for not just the old comprehensive plan, but really what the vision is for the future of the city. And it it gets people a really excited feeling from now to old about what we got, what we want to be remembered for, for our children's history as well as for um, the communities around us. Why is their heart different? Why is it special to be here? And it it brings it to life. So that's my thoughts. Um, the firms that they did hire for Montana cities, I have the resources for and they're just wonderfully facilitated for your community if you like. So I'll send these over and you guys can take a look at it.
Well, we are. Dana and I both have attended a strategic planning and visioning seminar from LOC down in was it Newport?
Uh, yeah, and people, yeah.
Yeah. And we talked about that. What a great idea would be to do that and engage the public and have a vision of what we want for Gearheart. But first things first. Public safety building. You know, is the first thing on our list right now, but I would look into that as soon as I'm reelected or when I'm elected mayor.
Well, but I may say having a vision is where a public safety building, what kind of building it is fits into you.
Uh huh.
Or what the future is for your, your water, maybe through trees. Everything that that a city could plan for in the future comes from that vision. So it's the that first and then I know you gotta do what you gotta do, but just letting you know. It's a bigger picture than just the building.
Right. Thank you.
Sharon?
Yeah.
Basically, what you're talking about is Spurs.
No.
Yes, Bozeman, Montana, Nepal, Idaho, every single one of these things that you guys, that you just mentioned, they all want seaside.
No.
Okay, the comprehensive plan is pretty clear. This is a residential community. Okay?
Yeah.
And it's probably say that. It's been that way for as long as Dick and I've been.
Okay.
Well, then I would ask you twice in the next meeting with the margin to actually get into what the vision is about this, not the economic commercial thing you're thinking it is.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we're going to move along. Ordinance nine four two, section six point zero seven zero eight, preservation and removal of trees, GOZ tax amendments. Now.
My move that we adopt ordinance nine four two as our tree ordinance uh to include uh the red red line amendments.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, Dana, you got something to say?
Yes.
Okay.
Mike. You can be against the way this is written and still be for trees. There is a right way to implement rules that are defensible and that all things are considered. What I hate to see is when we do something. and that all, all things are considered. What I hate to see is when we do something and we do it piecemeal and we don't, when we're opening this up, we're not addressing the bigger picture. We're not looking at how this is going to impact um, goal ten of our comprehensive plan, which is, um, which requires that we have multiple lots of the state, where the state is going with that. Um, there are still some major changes I would propose, even to, even if we don't include the red line um, under, except, on page two, exception. At the exception, I still, um, I still, still have some serious concerns about us trying to say a, you are gonna be, that in order to remove a safety hazard or a dangerous condition, um, that you then later have to get a tree removal report, and, um, you may not be able to get a report from our, they may simply refuse, and I can imagine times when I've had several of them tell us that they could not do those reports, and I've had some say, well, what, what it would do when we have just had a situation where a lot of people, so that will be one of my issues. I would, if we were to do the heritage tree thing, the definition would have to be something defensible. I don't see that passing any Fourth Amendment test or any of the case law that requires that, um, that things be written clearly so that people know how they can comply with these. Um, and to me, I agree with the recommenda- recommendation that if you wanted to a heritage tree and you would have to do, uh, you'd have to do an inventory. And you would have to have some public meetings and some public discussion about what are going to be, what, what is going to be, wait, to a heritage tree here. We have serious considerations that maybe some others cities that do heritage tree rules don't have to, I'm not sure they all have septic systems like we do. Um, or, or creeks going through their backyard and other things, so I would like to know about that, what our inventory would be and how that would affect our multiple lot inventory. Um, and also, I have some concerns about how this affects us, um, protecting trees without I would like to see an addition that says that you can't plant a tree in a rite of quiet. So many people are planting things out in front of their house in areas that they're not supposed to, over a water main in an unsafe location where it's going to block people's view or in a two footers to your building or two, two footers to somebody else's building. Those would be, if we were to look at those recommendations, then I would, um, and also, we've also talked recently. It is, we just did the budget thing, and we talked about how our, our increased cost in the city, our cost out facing our revenue. And we're getting to a tight place. Now, we're getting to the point where we're talking about adding more for our staff to do, when we all know that our staff have fair enough to do. I want to know what would we take off and what burden would we leave them up in order to place this burden on the next. That's what it would take to be to vote yes to this. It's not, I'm against trees, it's against, I'm against increasing our expenses without having a real good plan and knowing how it's gonna impact so many other things.
So, we have two versions that both have red lines, so could we clarify which version we'll struggle with?
Talking about the second one. Where's their interpretation on by councillor Col, Colford, Rowan?
Oh, and also the fact that changes about the basic trees.
Fluff, I'm so sorry, Sharon. I can't say.
I, I didn't say this during my presentation, but I, I should have, and it's just that, um, if you want to incorporate councillor Sharon's concepts, my recommendation would be to make a motion that city staff, um, more thoroughly integrate them into nine forty two. Um, rather than just adopting that red line right now. Thank you.
All right. Would you like to modify your motion or are you stuck?
I'd be willing to have, can we?
So, would you like to put probably your motion and then make another one that Garrett said?
Okay, uh, I move that we adopt ordinance nine four two, uh, with inclusions, uh, uh, of the red line version, uh, to be how should I put it? Smoothed out by Garrett? I don't know.
Incorporated in the nine four two? Yeah, I, I don't know that we can make any changes once you've adopted it.
I, I think we could be done with one more meeting if you want those changes. We, we, we need to write it up.
Can I just get some clarifications of, so I, I think I, I think I understand what you want, um, as far as the heritage tree. To the extent that we can be as clear and objective as possible, that certainly done with the fifty five inches that we can all understand. Historical or unique aesthetic values, last clear and objective, um, so we would need to tighten that up. Who are you thinking would apply for the heritage tree designation? Would it be the property owner that applies for the heritage tree, or would it be somebody else? And then the other thing is that, that city that I used to represent with heritage tree was Westland. You had a kind of robust program. The city maintained the heritage trees despite the fact that they were on private property. Is that the idea, or would it be the property owners that would maintain the trees?
I think you're going to reduce litigation if it's a property.
And again, I, I just, I don't wanna bring, I don't wanna surprise anyone with what we bring back. I just, I wanna, I just wanna have a better kind of understanding of.
I wouldn't put the maintenance burden from the city.
Okay. And would it be a member of the community that would donate the tree, or would it be the owner?
Uh, how about if it could be either of those, uh, and or an, uh, another citizen of the city?
And, and would, would you want us to, would you want kind of an inventory of the trees that occur or? Okay, so.
And I, I would be happy to do that.
Okay, so, inventory, um, we'll try and declare an objective things, um. And then specify it's, it's a, a community member, the property owner. Um, would you want the property owner to have? If it's historical structures, the property owner generally has appeal rights where they could make the case that their structure isn't historic, would you want that or not?
In historical structures.
Yeah, so this is kind of similar. The heritage tree is kind of similar to, if we're creating an inventory, then generally, when you, when you designate something in a way that would impact the property owner, and again, the thing that I think is most analogous um, since we're not taking over the care of the trees, would be a kind of like a historic designation for a building. So, under kind of the legal precedent for that, the owner usually has an appeal right, so if, if like Westland, again, that's, I represent Westland in the historic heritage, so that's why I'm using Westland as example, not suggest that we do what Westland does, but we provided notice to the, um, to the homeowners, and then they had kind of an opt-out where they could if they didn't think their home was historic or merited, the protection that's down and opt-out. This, would you want that in this or not?
And that is for the owner to opt-out if he wanted to make his tree a heritage tree. He has to have the right to say no, it's not going to be one because it's his tree. So, yes, I, I think that would be something that would have to be included.
And again, we'll, we'll bring it back, we'll try and capture kind of what we heard. Um, try and get everything right, so that all the case for more being in the business to work on this forever. I feel like I've kind of been in a lot of meetings, but we've talked about it, so, um, we'll do our best and hopefully we can capture kind of what, what you guys want.
Okay.
I think also based on what councillor Dana was talking about, we'll also kind of store this once we start looking at it, determine what kind of time it's gonna be, and then kind of also to the, uh, council at the same time would look at, uh, if the, you know, for this tree permit, is it would be? Because it sounds like it was gonna be enough here to, a fee, a system, us and potential within the position in the future. Or we skip this process.
Yeah.
Okay, so if if you withdraw your motion, then we'll bring it back next month with all the changes incorporated into nine four two.
I withdraw my motion.
All right. Moving on. Yes, Dana?
Garrett does have historic building designations, but they are all parrots. There are no requirements.
Right.
Okay, and that program, we did it deliberately, and we got money from the state Historic Preservation Office, fine. They were so, we come into the B N department.
Sure.
I don't know if there's any money out there for treaties. But you can get volunteers, then volunteers get your money for credits for hiring workers. Just, I, I don't accept the treaties.
Well, that could be something that could be looked into in the meantime while we're going through this process.
And we didn't have any trouble. People didn't really opt out. They just, they didn't get anything.
Right.
There wasn't any requirement.
Yeah, I understand. It's, uh, I, I think in reality, though, a tree is different than a house as far as what people are willing to do and not do. So, that, that might be something that we'll look into, but, uh, right now, we're gonna bring it back next month so we can do it again. All right, Chad. You're up on the notice of the, oh, excuse me. Anyone requesting to comment on any new business can do so at this time. If you raise your hand, state your name and address. And do you know what the new business is? Cause I'll read the titles to them. Notice of election, League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priorities twenty twenty five and city administrator review. You can make a three-minute comment. If you raise your hand, anyone online, raise your hand. Seeing no one anywhere raising their hand, Chad, you're going to do this.
Sir. I said mayor and council, so this, uh, next item on the agenda is just the notice of election for Gerhard City Council. Uh, so notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty four, an election will be held for the purpose of electing one councillor position number two, one councillor position number four, and one mayor. The names of the candidates who, uh, haven't met the requirements for these offices are listed below and up at a board. We have Polana Cochran, councillor position two, and David Sattner, councillor position two. Then we have, uh, Sharon Crawford, councillor position four, and Patricia Roberts, councillor position four. We have Robert Moore for mayor and Carrie Smith for mayor. We've sent this, uh, out to the elections, uh, officials in Mc County. And we certify that these offices are open for election and that the above listed requirements are correct and complete.
Okay, thank you. Going on to new business, the LOC legislative priorities. Chad, read the synopsis for us, please.
We'll do, mayor. Council, council will receive emails from the League of Oregon Cities on around June twenty first Electoral Priorities Voters Game. Cities, uh, needed to review the twenty-three recommendations from the第七 policy committees. Each city will have a voice in shaping the LOC's legislative act agenda for the next two years. This is twenty-five and twenty-six. Each city will have five votes ranking from the top five legislative priorities. City Gerhard Council each received a polling from the staff of instructions on our five boxes that each individually believed represented the top five issues Gerhard recommends. He added to priorities for the these twenty-five, twenty-six legislative disciples. The final top five was derived from consensus. Many each responded to the poll. Tonight's staff for sharing poll results, the top five priorities. Uh, then we will cast as Gerhard's vote on the behalf of the city council for this twenty-seven thousand, are the behavioral health enhancements, community safety and neighborhood durability, restoration and recreation of immunity, lodging tax flexibility, and infrastructure funding. So, we will forward those votes, uh, to the board and six.
Thank you. Okay. Now, on to the city administrator review.
I think we're gonna bring that back in the next session.
Uh, that's after, yeah, when Chad's done his synop- synopsis.
Sure.
Or his, um, rebuttal. Hey, council concerns. Dana?
Um, so, the, the election takes place in November and then it comes back in December, correct?
In this city, it does.
Okay. Um, then it's time for us to make sure that, you know, the December, um, agenda, a review of council rules. So, I'm very concerned about some things that I've seen. It all needs to review the council rules, and especially with, I think it's completely elected. Actually, that everybody understands council rules and, um, at least just have to sign off with a charter.
All right. Sharon?
Okay, a few things. Um, Peter, I have a request of you, please. Uh, I wondered you, uh, made a statement that under our water agreement, we have to provide water to, um, as zones currently, to the development, should it happen, uh, up off a highway.
Yeah, that's, that's within our water map.
So.
Area.
Yes, so my request to you is, can you get us a copy of where in our water agreement that, that resides?
Yeah, I think we have that water map, we have that water service area map. Maybe we should just put it on the website.
There's a lot of service area map that was submitted when city Gerhard was originally going for its water rights and who those water rights are, where the water can be used.
And then as part of our urban services, um, agreement with council.
Right, I wonder if we can have some wording in that now.
Oh, yeah.
That'd be great, thank you. Uh, second concern is I'm wondering if we should no longer impose on the police department to deliver our council packets. I'm wondering if, uh, we could take that, uh, off of them, uh, and just make it so that city councillors pick up their own packets at city hall. Just throwing it out there. Uh, and then my last concern is, uh, I looked at our contract with Klosch. And in the contract, the reason I looked at it is because, uh, the way I understand it, Jesse Steiger made a statement that she was contracted to report to Chad. So, that led me to wondering what the contract actually said, and the contract, as I read it, says that Klosch is to report to a designated city representative. That's the wording that says in the contract. So, my question is, who or when was it decided, uh, who that city representative would be? Just curious.
I, well, for the city, when she has needs for staff or something like that, she makes those requests in the bin and then on the regulations, such as what the fire department needs for this, or how much square footage you currently have to add and that sort of thing. So, I've been the go-to for those issues. But otherwise, we haven't had any other special meetings, uh, other than what we talked about in our meeting group with you and Dana. And that's reported to the entire group, so. Yeah, I haven't made decisions, but she does go through, give you her staff issues.
Yeah, that's, I understand.
The kind of issues we're looking at in regards to.
I wasn't looking at issues, I was looking at her statement that she reports to you.
So, is it general rule there, there are three people that report directly to the council, so the the city administrator, the city attorney, and the municipal judge. Um, and then. And then everyone else, unless it's specified, reports to the city manager. So like city staff don't report to me. If Chad wants me to work with the staffer on a project, then he lets me know and then we make sure he's lived in. So generally, a city council will have three, I would say, direct reports. And that's true in every jurisdiction that has municipal judge. Of the jurisdictions that don't have, unless it's a strong council government like the city of Portland was where they didn't have the city administrator, it was the mayor, the council ran everything, then everywhere else is manager, manage. It's just the city manager and the city attorney. You guys have the judge because you have a municipal judge.
So let me just be clear about this. So the city representative, that's, that's the wording in the contact, is de facto, Chad?
Unless you specify that someone else. So in a larger city where they, this, where they have a lot more staff, it's, it usually, it says a designate of the city manager. And so then it will be like the head of building, the planning, or whomever, whatever staffer that's under the city manager makes, is most aligned with the project. So it has the most expertise in the project.
Okay, so who said, unless it's decided otherwise?
Right, so in those enlarged jurisdictions.
But we were never, we never discussed this. This was never discussed with state council. So I, I'm just not understanding how this process will go.
So all third-party contractors, with the exception of me, would just de facto report to Chad unless Chad designated someone else as the, as his designate?
Certainly. Chad, we voted to have Klosch group represent as a council.
That's not what I'm talking about. I understand.
I don't want to be in a position of there being any required information or secret meetings or anything like that. So I just wanna be clear here. What I do for the Klosch group is when they call and they wanna set up a meeting, I set those meetings up with them in here, usually with the group that's involved with it, that'd be Dana and Preston and the staff. If there's questions that the Klosch group has of the staff, I'm kind of the go-through with that. A lot of times I'll ask them to go talk to them about various items. And they've got some questions about, you know, how many fire trucks do we have? How much square space are we currently using on this and that? I go ahead and make that through, but I just wanna make sure that we get that, this concern taken care of before it goes out to the public and we get Facebook and all those things with some kind of a proprietary or that ever not being proper here. Is there, is there a different way that you want me to handle it?
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm just asking about the process. I'm not making a criticism. I'm not saying you should or shouldn't do anything. I think that your input is invaluable. Obviously, you know a lot more than a lot of other people that would be giving them input and answering their questions.
Yeah.
I'm not. I have no contention with that whatsoever. I'm just asking about the process of how does the city representative get picked? That's all. And I think Peter answered that question for me.
I mean, it wasn't that what I was thinking of.
Same, same. Do you think the city representative that helped us with the same RFP process that we went through and we select somebody to help us find the police chief? Or when we went out for any other concern, be.
Okay, so Dana?
I have no.
Preston?
Zero.
Zero.
I have none. Make a motion to adjourn them.
I'm second.
All those in favor say aye and aye.
Aye.